We'll call it to order, let's say the pledge. It started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just like that, here we go. Alright, so we got everybody but Naomi this evening, so we still have a quorum, we're good. On the regular agenda, we are pulling number nine, that's the only change I'm aware of. Okay, so just nine and ten, then we'll pull. Got it? Man, we should be done in a half an hour now. You heard that, right, everybody? Done here tonight? Okay, anything else? Alright, look for a motion to accept the agenda with said changes. Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So everybody, consent agenda, any last minute changes on that one, anybody? Okay. Look for a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff, just a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Alright, minutes from the December twenty first meeting.
I, I really didn't get a chance to review these before the meeting, but I'm, I do have some comments. Um, I don't know if I'll be complete, I just, we got them late. Um, the November twenty first minutes under item eight. Um, I think we should either remove, or we need to provide additional context. Uh, where it says council member Landstrom stated that the ID agreement showed that the majority of landowners had petitioned for the improvements, that wasn't uh, really the spirit of my comments with regard to that section, so I would move either remove that, or I would need to review the minutes um, to have put further information about my comments. Uh, agenda item eight.
Who was this in regards to?
Well, I think my comments, I'd have to go back and review the conversation, but I think my comments with regard to this item or my questioning in, okay, in the ID agreement, I mean, my point, my point wasn't to point out that
Yeah.
Do, do you know what I'm saying, Brenton?
Yeah.
My point was to question the process that we went through to get, um, I was, I was questioning the process about how we maybe were able to shorten the processes because the majority of the landowner, land in the district is owned by the developer. That was my point.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, I would like it to be removed.
Okay, anything else in there?
Not for me.
If not, then I'll look for a motion to accept the, with Dick said change.
Make the motion with the said change.
Okay, Jeff, can I get a second?
Second.
There's a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries to number six, December fifth meeting. Any changes there?
Um, I think I also have some changes there too, um, I don't know that I voted to approve item twelve. Twelve was just the downtown plan. I think I voted no for that, and then I also voted no on number thirteen, the budget item, uh, the second budget item. Second motion, which is properly noted. I'd have to go back and review the minutes or the video, but I'm pretty sure I voted no on both.
I think she did too.
I did.
It's on the correction to.
Maybe a correction to number twelve. And then my vote is correct under item thirteen.
Yeah, so make that change on twelve and. Okay, anything else? Alright, look for a motion to accept the minutes from December fifth with the said change.
I'll second.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, Stephanie has a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, public comment, anybody got anything you want to chit chat about tonight? One's gone twice. Alright, we will move on with the sheriff's report, and they don't have, well, do we get one? I don't think I got one.
No.
That'll be next time. Okay, let's move quickly to number eleven then, Jim, you got that one.
Like the government or building chambers, balance the construction quantity, so balance the contract with the construction quantity. So, I'm gonna tell you that. Um, pretty much standard deviation among the items.
Can you hear out your voice or where you can hear you?
Uh, like I said, there's an attachment onto it as far as the explanation of what we're on under, something relates that that stood out.
Quick question, so this, this only takes into account the road on the west side, not the one in the middle, is that correct?
From west.
The, um, for Maple Lakes, you said.
Base two middle.
Correct, okay, I just want to make sure these, all this stuff that the negative balance is coming back for isn't going to be just added back in, in one year.
I only had one question on this, and it was because I didn't have the contract in front of me included in this packet. There was a note for the final lift of pavement that was removed from this because it's, it won't be installed as part of this project. When or under what project will we be installing the final lift of pavement?
So typically, we've done those when, um, eighty percent of the homes are built, and if, if it's been accounted for in the bonding, then it gets done as a separate pay for with another assessment district.
That's what I want to make sure.
Yeah, and I can't remember on the tour of occurs yet that is part of, part of, uh, the district at the city bottom for that one. Or not, but that's the way it's typically done, if not, um, I think the difference has come out of the sales patterns and sales.
Typically, if we do budget for a final lift, and there is, say, it probably costs a little bit more than what we had budgeted and sales tax.
Okay, I just wanna.
Separate district.
That's what I want to make sure that we don't have to create a separate district, because there will be some questions if we do that, so I just want to make sure that I've read that correctly, that's the only issue that I have with this.
And we are able to, if we're not comfortable with whatever we have in that tip bond.
Yep.
For that final lift, we're as well, because we're going to be in permanent financing here, so more that district.
Good.
So then we can make adjustments and have more put aside for our final lift.
Nice.
At the time of the permanent bond.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that one?
This is just eleven A, that's correct. Doing eleven B separate.
I know, Jim, do you want?
Uh, no, do the first one.
Okay. Alright, so we'll do the first one, balancing the change order number three. Get a motion on that, that's pretty much a no brainer.
Issue with the balancing change order number three, motion two.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second? Stephanie has a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and this is, okay, on B.
Uh, B is the final progressive estimate thirteen, the model forty five. This reduced release of the retained, there were twenty-two days of damage assessed and done at two thousand five hundred dollars per day, and there, uh, this reduces retaining to down to two nothing. Uh, the reason that this one was completed so long ago and just finished out now is because we got the outstanding, suddenly the loans got taken care of now, so we finish the final.
And we did, um, like you said, I, I had, was harder hearing, twenty-two days?
Twenty-two days of lifting down, yep.
And that offsets the cost that we had to leave this project open?
Uh, I would say so, fifty-five thousand dollars, it wasn't, there wasn't any purchase as far as like our time or anything like that, then, I don't know as far as a, um, what city would have incurred.
Good.
No.
Then I have no issue with this, that was the other issue I had with this, thank you.
Okay, so. Questions?
Nope.
Look for a motion to accept the final progressive estimate.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff makes a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries, Jase, what we got for a lot inventory map?
So, uh, a few while ago, we kind of brought forward a copy, and I apologize not having the word one up right now, I get a little glitch for the the upload today. So what we ended up doing with live inventory was, we have turned into a web application map that will end up going live on a website, and probably by tomorrow, I'll have the full function, and what I'm able to send out to you guys and take a look through and see how I'll just kind of walk through, through the shots that I have, but right now. So it'll break down with developer own, builder own, resident own, built on, as it goes through, so this is kind of the main view when you open the app, it'll show you your map, there'll be a about section, kind of an updating graphic that goes through here with a pretty easy search tool that will go through. Um, in the about section, my demo didn't work, so there's going to be horse liver rate there, obviously, then it's going to go through, kind of give you a little bit idea what the map is. Um, icons that are on to that page, and then it'll tell you how those operate. They, oh, I know how to search this, or go and change this legend, um, and then it'll go into kind of definitions of what permitted mean or permitted build, what owned by the developer means. Um, and so it will give people a really good idea of what they're actually going to be looking at here. Then there's a component that's a live breakdown, so as the data is updated, this table will start to change and move and kind of give a real time picture of what the permitted data or permitted lots look like within the city, so in the live version, when you hover over this, it will pop up and show you exactly what the permitted and build section is, and do a breakout, and actually will highlight every lot in the city that is done that way. And then the search tool that we've created through that too, so there's already preloaded categories in there as well, so if you're curious, we're an HOA facility lot in Swinton Town. Um, you can click that and click search, and it will run a result, uh, through here, give you exactly how many features are under that tag, and then through these three dots, when you pick that up, you can then download that directly to an Excel file, so it makes it easily accessible. So that's kind of live picture, I'll give you guys the link to it before it's ready to go actually live and take a look, and I'll take any feedback at all. Um, spent a lot of time with color and stuff to make this as easily readable as it can be. Uh, but this is going to be kind of nice as we got through that population analysis, but this is going to kind of dive into that data further, so we can real time track what that lot scenario looks like through the city, and it's also going to have some tools for, uh, doing special assessment districts and figuring out what the liability drop off is going to be as well.
It'll help us with lawyer credit.
Mm-hmm.
So we know when a lot drops off, then be able to quickly see where a development is at, how much of the percentage of the lots are filled.
Talk to me a little bit about real time tracking, what are the triggers? Or the categories for something to be live, is this when a permit application comes in, is it when it's processed?
So, yeah, well, many of that are going to be, uh, I have a lot that show they're ready, which would skew that number, but
Right.
Like ISR and those ones that sometimes they drop, and then they end up not ever pulling that permit, so I wait till it's issued, and so I'm reviewing it probably every week to see if anything has been issued, and then it gets updated through here. Um, which then I'll update on my desktop and then sub update online.
Interesting, you put some time into this.
Do you have a way to, uh, filter it out by zoning?
Uh, there is an ability to do that, I want to eventually expand this into a zoning map that updates, so this is kind of just the, the piece of the puzzle, one piece of the puzzle that eventually our online data that's going to be available, people will expand in some way, but current zoning that's going to be updated, uh, even if, I'd like to eventually install an application tracker as well, so people can see online where applications are being pulled and stuff, and have some of that information housed as well. So this is kind of the first step to really building our data pool that we have and our information pool that we have for residents and contractors and, uh, commercial enterprises, anything like that.
So Jase, let me ask you this, is there a way then, when you get this thing done, that we can go back, I'm just looking at this more from a forensics or from a historical standpoint? Like say, if I wanted to know, I'll say spot check Jan one, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, are we able to kind of watch and see that change over time? Were we able to go back that far is kind of probably what I'm getting at?
I can try and figure out this, this mall right now.
Okay, just. This is, I just know that there could probably be some, uh, reasons why to do, to have something like that.
I agree with that, and I, I think maybe a, a January first and a June first check, even if this particular program doesn't do it, maybe just something to keep in your back pocket.
Right. Yeah.
Moving forward, so that we have a, a six month, you know, change every single year, something of, like you said, forensic historical value that we can take a look at and say, okay, three years ago, this is where we were, today, this is where we are, what do we need to be looking at as a council as far as funding wise?
Right.
To ensure that we have the proper resources to support the growth.
It gives us a chance for trending, so we can get an idea on trending, plus the other thing is when we go out for bonding, and we're dealing with the bonding agencies like that, they're going to want to see some trending, we're able to show this in real numbers.
Yeah.
That helps.
So this is, this is the, the behind the scenes, this is what I work on with my desktop.
Yep.
Someone puts it on here, so this is broken down right now by permit here, as you can tell, both versus what is in this white, means we're built out. Yeah, so you're like a Greek. Start to have, it will show kind of by year, uh, which lot each permit came, so there, there's an easy ability to show time wise, like timeline, how something is built out every year.
Yeah, I mean, that's really all we need, something.
Permit here, right there on the very bottom left, take a look at that, and the different colors, interesting.
More variety in years. Precares.
Yeah, because I always started back in twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen.
So you can see there's a little bit more color differences here, so we kind of break down basically from twenty page, you know, right to twenty-two, you can see how these additions start to to build out and how rapidly they can, so we, we do have the ability to do that kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's. It is interesting stuff to be able to show people, because that gives you at least an idea on the growth, just because we say it, you know, the, but you start showing maps like this, so they start seeing the color changes. You know, pictures are worth a thousand words, that kind of stuff shows the growth we're dealing with. So, okay.
Wow. Thanks, Joe.
Nope.
Very good job.
Good.
Right, I, I will give the working link out to everyone, and then maybe next meeting, if I can feedback or give me a call, I can run through it. Well, um, just add a little circular communication here.
Basically, since middle of summer, right? Come back to work to get to where it's at now.
Yep.
And at that point where it's about to go revive on, you know.
Right, but don't get me wrong, I really like it, I'm just saying, just from a, if you can get here, can we get here, you know? So, okay.
I, I actually, I, I like the idea of just implementing and maybe directing staff to do a, a spot check, January first and June first every year.
That's what I mean, and maybe save the map or whatever, just it's, just some, something that we can show over time, these changes, because they're significant.
I remember the preliminary discussions on this, and kind of a sneak peek, and it's night and day from where that was originally, that's, wow, nice. And it's not nearly as cumbersome as the county GIS program.
Also, this one, it starts, so this, it kind of give an idea when and you can start to see like those takes out, those out those probably most impressive in terms of quickly to build out, but self-built third and first, faulty or a little bit, but you know, looking for self-built there. You can see a lot of these are permanent, so that's going to show kind of an indirect color here, developer own, these are ones that have not changed hands, which with HS investments, they may keep and build them, so these could change without ever changing to a builder own. But, you know, they have very few lots, that tan color is going to show everything that is developer owns and proof subdivision or addition, but we don't have this structure yet, so it's not open or online yet, so that's also taking into account into that lot inventory number of what we have waiting in the queue as well, and you'll get that, uh, I'll take the eye chart circle graph, it'll show you what we have sitting, waiting in the queue, so we can also long term plan, like, now we have four hundred that we know are going to come online within the next year. We have an, an idea of what we have coming in front of us, both his bodies approved, and we can be able to track how that number fluctuates.
I'm almost giddy, Jase, good work. Good work.
Yep, up. Anybody have any other questions?
No, thank you, Jase.
I hope you need the action, one, one that I was just going to touch base, clear expand on really quick, what you're saying. What he was talking about, some developers are also builders.
Yeah.
It is a little misleading, this is based on the data that we're able to get publicly, there are going to be situations where a felt made out like purchase agreement to the builder, builder may go build house and not close on the lot until after the house is done too, so there are some different dynamics that, you know, just keep in mind that, that that isn't going to be perfect, it's going to be about as close as we can get. Um, so what, just giving you a heads up, any sort of kind of little information that's hard, what he was saying, he's telling me.
Right.
And, and the data may lag too from the county, for example, we, we know some spots where a property may have sold a month or two ago, but we may not have caught it, or it's been brought to our attention till months later, even after that, so if there may be lags here or there of by time of showing from the county again, then onto this.
Well, let, let me know when you get a crystal ball, and then we'll, uh, we'll work through that, but as far as this goes, I mean, actual data, provable data that you can measure, this is phenomenal.
Alright, anything else on this one, guys?
Nope.
Jase, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, Brent, you got the next one?
People's pretty short.
Yep.
Uh, bank authorized users in regards to making sure we update who can feel their big accounts or the banks. Uh, Matt Bolts, he's in audit here tonight, he's a finance director, you haven't met him yet, pretty, say hi, the meeting.
Welcome, Matt.
Ordering.
Order.
Uh, but anyways, we just need to have action from the council to be able to add Matt as authorized user, the users I have, he and these are ones that are able to sign check or be able to speak for city if we have an issue, uh, most of the time is two, same, like our checks are two signature checks, like on their checks overall, they'll have Corey's signature and then mine. It's order, uh, but Sarah is the backup one, and then Matt will be the other one, so you have to before authorized users, the checks prior to signatures. So, uh, it would be then, if I have the authorized user to keep that, Corey, Sarah, itself, and the main change is to add Matt. We need to have action for the council.
Yep.
Minutes, so then the bank can take the minutes as documentation.
Okay, motion to approve the new finance director as a bank account authorized user.
Okay, so Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie has a second, okay. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries, alright. Boulevard tree program, number fourteen.
So, been working with Brendan confidence about how to implement, get together, Boulevard tree programs, it's been a on and off discussion council for a while. Um, we really came down to program would be like two-pronged approach, you have your newer homes, so really any home that has been permitted or CDO twenty twenty-three on, because we have to pick it, well, stop time, so any building permit twenty twenty-three on, they fall under this category. Uh, we have in there two hundred dollar cost per tree deposit required, number of trees determined at the time of the building permit. So, really, this would be applied, if you have more than one tree, your lot is probably going to be over reasons I say that's because the tree shouldn't be within certain distance of the driveway, about ten feet. If you have a hundred foot wide lot, many residents have a thirty or thirty-six foot wide driveway. Um, so you lose about half a lot between driveway and then what you can't put next to the driveway. Um, that gets you down to one tree, sometimes two, depending on where it falls in place. If a lot does require more than one tree, and this will be front facing, so front from the front the driveway looking at to the house, if it requires one more than one tree, that would be identified that the time the building permit is issued, so it's a deposit, builders prior to pay down. They have one year after the certificate is issued to, it's three. If they don't, then we retain the deposit and we'll go play a tree yet. They may not have a choice on what tree it is if we go put a tree in on forum, it would be from our approval of our tree list, and we'd probably be keeping it pretty simple, because you want to keep the cost effective, you're going to see something like maple trees or elms or something like that, you know, where it's a pretty economical tree. If the tree is installed by the property owner, they get that deposit back. Special assessment districts have covered the cost of trees, so the den lots, for the front of house is not present, so that'd be like the side of a lot. Um, or you, or more if you have like five or six trees of the length of their lot. But that would be when we first do the development, so we're, we're just talking about Cup Creek second edition, for example, we would comfort those trees right up front, and get those put in. So that's what we're referring to, so, because if a builder, somebody's building a house on a lot, they really should be accessing it from the front, and if they are coming from the side, in theory, they should be able to drive between the trees if they had to, but we're trying to get them to pay attention to that. This would have a little bit more complete Boulevard tree approach initially, but when the development's done, it's not the most ideal, because if they hit a tree, that builder has to replace that tree. Um, I say one to four different tree options, they said, you can look pretty basic. Property owners expect to maintain the tree and say it's not responsible for sprinkler system repairs, damages occur to that. That, and that statement comes from like our snow policy, our snow rule policy, if we have sprinkler head, we're not responsible for repairing it, because in the Boulevard, it's technically often, a lot of times it's off the individual's property, not on, because the Boulevard is typically within street driveway, so that's where we're coming from with this, because all intent is to have the trees in the Boulevard.
Okay.
Not in people's yards, so they would install the trees after that one year, if, if we have to keep the deposit, we would install them in lines, because we want to make sure that tree ends up in the ballpark. Any questions on the new home?
Mm-hmm. What if we have a lot that's, um, fairly small, front square footage, what are you going to do?
There's mostly driveway.
That's my question. May not be required to, because by the ordinance is, they may not be required to have that tree.
And I'm just wondering if you had it all laid out yet, that's.
Yeah, there would be some situations where we might not even be able for, you know, horse tree in, or we incentivize.
So who goes out and marks the location of the tree?
We would identify that within the building permit, saying, okay, tree would need to be within this area.
Here, here.
Yeah, there's expected builder to identify some tree locations. They will probably have some complaints from building community, but. They will probably have some complaints from building community, but they expect to have some trees.
They're going to want orange paint. Just so you know, okay. Lucas, how does this line up with what we discussed previously with your ordinance?
So on your like the current ordinance, forestry committee sets up a program like this or runs program like this. Do you just have forestry committee?
If this received, then I could go. I want Lucas and if we need to update or install.
Well, and and we may be at that point where we're not quite big enough for a forestry committee or or we don't have. People willing to do that at this point in time, but down the road, it may be something that we're going to need.
Well, so the reason for that committee so far is could be considered treason. That's why forest connected the ordinance that it did.
We started some stuff, but we never, we didn't have enough.
Do we need to finish it? Is what I'm wondering, or?
Well, we can. It's just we gotta pull, we gotta pull people back together again.
And we might be getting close to that size where it would make a little more sense. To take this off of staff and and have. Somebody available that handles this, because going out marking, checking this, tracking it is going to take some time, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. Was it four years ago? We did this five years ago?
I I do believe to have this be successful program that's going to get implemented. Staff would be taking charge of this.
To start at least, okay.
I I hate to say that from an angle of yeah. Yeah, but it would be to get this moving and if you want this implement. We're the ones already engaging, you know, Jason's again, Jim. We're dealing with the developers when we have the initial plating, when we have the design, the development. Those elements that we're already involved with.
Say for now, let's let the cities handle it. I think at some point, though, we should probably reconstitute that committee, but I don't think it's now. Let these guys figure out what the procedure is.
I I don't want to belabor it. I I think we all know how passionate I feel about the beautification of our city. Some of you have been involved in the multi hour conversations about getting these trees planted and whatnot, so I'm I'm thrilled. To see this. And yeah, Cory, I think I agree with you. Let's have a discussion after we got a few months. Under our belt. Let's see where we're at.
I think it will follow with. This program that. And I think that we should actually do this, because the red lines that we had with the ordinance. Hope didn't staff or more of the city comes up rather than.
Oh, you're right. We talked about that. I forgot about that. Okay, yeah, you're right.
I sent that to you in the live.
Brent, I just have one more quick question on the new home. Could you just say again? Uh, what, you know, when Jeff brought up the, what was the lot size of the perimeters for requiring a tree again?
The trees are supposed to be spaced about every thirty feet, I believe, is what. And when you get to a lot. By the time you get to a lot that needs to have more than one tree, you're stocking a eighty or ninety foot wide lot or more. Because if you have thirty, say thirty six feet per driveway, it's offset from. By fifty feet, so you've lost fifty feet right there, plus another ten feet. Then you have thirty feet where you get to that tree. That's that's what I'm saying. You're looking at about a near ninety foot wide lot before you're. Required to have more, you know, probably ninety foot or better before you're required to have. Form a tree. It all depends on how the lot is laid out, where they have their driveway placed and everything. That's.
And so the lot, I mean, we have some lots, though. I mean, I'd be, correct me if I'm wrong, that are like only forty feet front edge. And I mean, they're not, we can't even put a tree there.
Challenge, just based off spacing alone, we have a part of the distance from the driveway and stuff like that. If there's a wide boulevard, so you might take. Review that has some that are very narrow. But if you can get some of those, for every like third one has a wide boulevard, you make it. It's in the right way.
And just something to think about, I guess.
That is less than a bitch where we're rather going to have to. Find another angle to approach those.
I was going to say, because we have entire neighborhoods where we won't even be able to put trees. It's, I think it's something we need to consider in the future.
And that and looking at this next one, next slide we have. That might be an angle where we might be able to incentivize some of those trees. So this gets into the pre twenty twenty three, so twenty twenty two or earlier builds. Uh, this can be a house, a year old, can be a house that's twenty years old. If they don't have Boulevard tree. This approach is application process first come, first served. I need to have a budget to work with, which would be in the forestry fund. But. Twenty five dollars for a tree, for that first tree. In front of the house in the boulevard. If they have a second tree in front of the house in the boulevard, you charge two hundred, just like the new home. End lots. Would be twenty five dollars per tree in the boulevard, like outside of the house. So. End lot where they have no trees and they should have maybe like half a dozen trees. We're trying to encourage it, not make it so painful to get some trees in. So we offset the cost of them, charge just twenty five for those. It would no retro retroactive approach. There's some behind this, Sarah. Everybody else, anybody else says put trees up, no, we can't come back and. Boy, put trees in this summer. And you have this program now. We have to have a beginning going in this program. You can't go back. It's how hard you go back. We probably have to update before she found on this to give it a line item on. That's specific amount, but I threw up ten thousand dollars. Or should we find would cover the difference of that twenty five dollars? And that way, we estimate that would give us about a hundred trees. So, yeah. It sounds like a lot of trees. But if you eat up really quickly, if we have more participation, say we get applications for two hundred trees. I'd always come back to also say, council, do you want to spend down the forestry fund a little bit? Or do you want to pull from like a general fund or something else to help make some of this stuff happen? Because we have interest from it. I do anticipate that you'd have interest within the first couple of years. And then this program would slowly settle down. Because you're not adding more new homes to the program, to that program. It's trying to get you Boulevard trees and. And really a short period of time.
So what are we looking at in the forestry funds? They, one of the reasons why we started that thing was because of the Emeralds. War coming to town.
Has around forty, forty two thousand, I believe, to its fund balance. It varies about twelve thousand, if I remember correctly, a year, twelve thousand a year.
So it wouldn't be a.
And that's why I had the ten thousand, because I felt that we'd be able to not really dip into our. Fund balance too bad.
And so if we're kind of, I'd say we're okay then.
Within this two. Maybe one to four different types of trees with this program, we'd ask residents in the application. Hey, these are the four different trees that we're operating. Give us your preference, one through four. Because if I run out of maple trees, then I can go to the number two, number two hopefully, and hopefully make a company their request. Proper expected to maintain the tree, take care of it. Uh, there isn't, we wouldn't be doing a warranty period to say, oh, if you don't borrow your tree, we're going to replace it for free for you. No, you got to take care of the tree. Let's say is not responsible for spring repairs also. Overall. I I just heard what I see on this one. This would be a pretty darn good deal for anybody that wants to get a tree in the boulevard. And that was the whole point is to incentivize it. But you know, at least twenty five dollars is not a bad deal, especially if you go. The heart of the store or Walmart or someone to get a tree. Here I spend also a hundred dollars or more just for a tree, then you get other materials, stakes and everything. You're going to be up there like that. This does put a little bit more work on our staff, but we would install the trees. If we have a contractor do it, we're going to be paying a lot more for the tree still. So that's why we were trying to keep it more or more. Odds are we probably have like other works that. Brentan auger or maybe go buy an auger or a skid steer. Then you're drilling the holes, you get a consistent depth for those holes. And it can go really quick. That's like a lot of these landscaping companies when they go find these trees. You know, multiple trees in an area. Just keep going online. Put the tree, you know, put the tree in, go. So that's what we're looking at. Uh, we do anticipate that between this. And the new home approach, we'd have by a few trees to plant. So I think that maybe different builders are probably going, homeowners will probably. Say keep the deposit, they'll plant a tree two years later, a year later. But if you're particular, you want a certain type of tree. And you're, instead of, you're encouraged more to plant some. Because there's some folks that use, yeah, I want a locust tree versus a maple. That would be where. If they want a specific tree, yeah, we'll offer that. And our goal would be to get this program implemented. On the new year. In sometime in January. So that way we have a chance to get glory out to the builders. We don't really get a whole lot of buildings in January, February. So it gives us a chance to compare, help you and say, it's what we're doing.
I have eleven hundred, I'm good.
Okay, any other comments? Yeah, I'm okay with the.
Motion from us, or what are you looking for?
If you're okay with this approach or these trees. I would ask probably in this motion move forward with this, and then what I'll do is I'll double check with Lucas to make sure if there's any ordinance work that needs to be refined. Uh, for fees. I will come back to you with the resolution piece when we do some updates on these. End lot goes in at that time. But if you're okay with this overall program. It would be helpful if we had a motion to support that, just so that we know, yeah. Possibly for this, we may, we do recognize that we may have to. Make adjustments and come back to you and. Figure out, say, okay, this one part, this thing worked greatest, we need to adjust, we need to learn from it, so let's adjust.
Yeah, I'm I'm okay moving ahead with it, so. Do we want to make a motion?
All seconds.
A second. All right, all in favor, say aye. Okay, that's everybody. Okay, special events permit, Brent. Just keeping you on your toes.
I know. We have a four year special events for for West Fargo events, their whole scene may be. Putting this on because they'd like to serve out of the event. Is a fundraiser take place in December thirtieth, senior center from six thirty to eleven thirty. Event is raise money for an organization there to stand out.
Wait a minute, December, the letter says October third year. Is it? Oh, okay, then. I thought it was next year, October thirty. Okay.
Pretty much boilerplate stuff, just like we always do to cut and dried, so. Can I get a motion from somebody to accept? Okay, Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second? After you do the second, okay, all in favor, say aye. And Carrie's, Jim, what do you got?
First things that I had was. I had to do a copy of the timeline that our. Field staff. For water for the project. And I can do the people, the whole thing, this is kind of extempore, you know, none of you will get too much of us. Enjoy two days.
Thank you. I really like it.
What this is, is a timeline from beginning to Thanksgiving. Arranged. Obviously, starting with when they started construction. And then, as you can see here, the red is tape page, green is AMO landscaping, purple is KW drone. Forests papers, you can see the times of when they were actually on site, who was on site during those days, what substance on site, so. Just a. Something you can. Just kind of see how that project is shook out. We don't have any, I don't have anything else on that project of value, but I figured that since. I did take the time to put this together, it's very inclusive, that would be interesting. Be of interest of you guys to be able to go through that. Uh, the other thing I have is an update on water meter for the. Uh, this was, I see, when you see this on December fourteenth, it said that. He spoke with the quote pump, the structure is complete except for the exterior end coating. I'm waiting for shipment of the coating. The structure will be delivered for week of Christmas to Key's shop in West Fargo. And they'll send us a picture when it arrives.
I'm not going to get excited until I see the picture, okay? Just saying. There's hope, but.
There's hope. It's getting close.
I hear you.
And then, um, last thing I have, sixty six trees completed, aren't we on a final? Thursday, a lot of. Efforts are put in behind the addition, trying to tie in a bunch of. Things that will be going along with the sides, so.
This was a lot of, a lot of work, Jim. Thank you. I mean, this is really. Wow, I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions for Jim? Thank you, Jim. Brent, what do you got?
I finished straight through a couple of weeks ago. I think questions. The other one, speaking of money. Uh, just to let you know, we're working on air ducts. For permanent, permanent financing, some of the temp bonds. Focus, Matt. I'll be dealing with different bonding stuff related to that. So you'll see colleagues. January, February. Come up. Uh, or some topics will be talked about parameters. That would be for temp bonds. Projects bonded with temp bonds in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. That are complete or nearly. Where, uh, didn't be comfortable with doing that, you know, closing them out or being close to close out. If you give us that, all the personal costs, so. We'd like to do that. Once we have those done, that's on done. Then we'll be able to start doing with our favorite thing. Special assessments, have a assessing commission get together and. Start reviewing the brackets and the recalls and things like that again, because we'll have actual dollars to work with. Because we can't get them the dollars yet, since I don't know the interest rate. Uh, that would likely be. In the spring. And we'll be able to start talking projects and special assessment commission will be able to. That's all.
What do you got? Okay, under portfolios, uh, just going to update everybody. Um, I got an email from Judy Lee that the North Dakota. Health and Human Services have launched their new online childcare licensing system. This is supposedly going to help streamline things. Um, some of the stuff was taking weeks to get done. I'm hoping that this, uh, system will help. Move things along a little bit. So we did publish it on our Facebook site. Sally, you going to put that on our, uh. Website then too at some point? Okay, perfect, because just for people's awareness that it's out there. Other thing I was going to bring bring up is that we did sell some temp bonds last week. And, uh, just to give you guys an idea. And, uh, just to give you guys an idea, we did a temp bond sale back in, that was May, I think, May, June. And those bonds we got three point eight eight percent, and, um. Obviously, interest rates have gone up since then, this last go around, we got four percent. Which is phenomenal. We've got a good thing going here, uh, we've got some big dogs that are watching what we're doing and are buying our bonds, so that's phenomenal. So, uh, like they said, keep up the good work and I'm just letting everybody know that this is, we're being watched and so far it's all been favorable. So that's awesome to get a four percent, I think, what was it, we were gonna do a par out it, we did not exceed like six and a quarter or something? Yeah. And they were, we were all thinking somewhere around four point five to five. Yeah. Yeah, it's like, wow, very surprised, but that's awesome, that's, that's, uh, that's helps.
They didn't get to us, they had some triple A rated, or bond rated.
Yeah.
Cities or government entities that. Right around that same day, we're gaining three and a half. Getting a little more in three and a half percent, so to see how close we were. Within a half percent.
Mm-hmm.
Triple A rated entity is pretty good.
Yep.
So.
Same, man. Yep, I just wanted to say that was a good thing, and I'm pretty excited about that. Um, Sarah, what do you got?
Not much, I was, uh, up to my eyeballs with the sixty-sixth street meeting, thank you, Jim, for hosting that. I really appreciate that, and otherwise, it's been a lot of communication with public works on, uh. Trying to get where we need to be in the last couple of weeks, so, um, that's all I have, other than that, uh, I hope everyone enjoys a very merry Christmas.
Okay, Stephanie?
Um, I don't have much either, uh, we had a wonderful holidays and horse celebration. Um, Sally and Brenda worked very hard on it, and I think the community really enjoyed it. And we've also been very busy with our hundred and fiftieth planning continues, I feel. Really good with the committees we've put together, um, for the different days, and I think we're in a good position as we move into the. Into twenty twenty-three, it's, it will be here faster than we realize. Um, and not to put anyone on the spot, but I was just curious when we were talking about the. The map, do we have permit numbers for October, November, and if you don't, that's fine. Um, it just brought up to my mind when I saw a lot of interviews. Okay, okay, thank you.
Dave, Jeff?
Um, we had a Metro Club meeting last week, uh, where we discussed, uh, our. Uh, possible amendment, uh, to UP WP plan, or, um. Funding for our downtown project that you wanted, uh, we asked for seventy-five thousand, they were able to get forty-two thousand. Um, the chair, Mr. Pepcorn, said that we are able to come back at a later point in time and ask for more, as more money comes available. Um, so right now we got forty-two thousand of that seventy-five, and then, uh, we'll have to apply for more as more money comes available. Other than that, that's all I got. Good, so.
One thing I do want, uh, the funding draft is talking about is consolidating banking grant funds or CPG, the Metro Program is called. The odds of funding available, like he was referring to, are normally pretty good. And being that this project, I do later, and you know, or happening through the year. Towards the end of the federal fiscal year and. Uh, pretty good chance that we'd be able to come back and seek some additional funding, Metro Park does get asked to. Spend out CBT funds here from the state or other areas of the state and stuff too, so. We're not too worried about, it can be able to secure additional funds for any side, wasn't, and that's coming from my experiences working. You want before here, at MPO and managing those scholars, so. It's a very good chance we'd be able to get those.
And, uh, one other point on that is, uh, they had some really good information for the, um. Possible, uh, I think they call it the metro loop, uh, the bypass around the metro area, uh, planned for twenty forty-five or beyond. Um, if you're curious, uh, hit me up, I'll send you a link, you can go look at the information about that proposal for twenty plus years out.
Yeah. So with that, we're gonna, I still have to read this, right, Lucas? Get to read the, forget to read what you wrote here for me. Yep, executive session held to be held pursuant to NVCC four-four dash oh four dash nineteen point one. To discuss negotiating strategy or provide negotiating instructions to its attorney or other negotiator regarding a contract for the purchase of real property. Go to the Burlington or Santa Fe Railroad property, so let's break for. Yep. Now we can motion to close, and then we'll break for five minutes and come back, okay?
I'll make a motion to close them.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second? Okay, Sarah, the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, close then for five minutes, get set up for the.
Your session.